Number 12. In accordance with Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically without a quorum physically present in the same location. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting. However, in accordance with Emergency Order Number 12, we have taken action to: one, provide public access to the meeting by telephone with potential additional access by video. We wish: provide public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting and provide a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. For this meeting, Microsoft Teams is being used as a communication platform. All members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, participate in the meeting by visiting lebanonnewhampshire.gov/live and clicking on the pertinent listed meeting. To assist in the preparation of the meeting minutes and to ensure all participants are aware of who is participating, all speakers are asked to identify themselves and dispel their first and last names before beginning to speak. We have not spelled our first and last names, and I don't think that's necessary. In order to ensure the best possible transmission of the meeting content, it is suggested that you disable the camera on your chosen device to reduce the video feed and increase the available bandwidth for all attendees. To improve sound quality and reduce the amount of feedback in the system, please ensure your microphones are muted unless you are asking a question or making a comment. If anybody has a problem with access during the course of the meeting, please call. This is Shawn Fleming's number, 603-359-3604, or email sean@fleming@leblibrary.com. In the event that there are technical difficulties and we are unable to hold the meeting, it will be adjourned and rescheduled. All votes taken during this meeting shall be done by a roll call vote. The meeting will begin by taking roll call attendance, and when each member states their name, please state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under RSA 91-A. So the first thing I will do is take attendance, and because I'm lacking video, I have to begin by asking a couple of people to identify themselves, phone number ending in 21. Can I do, are people hearing me?
Yes.
Good. And a phone number ending in 11.
That's mine, Donna Hartford.
Oh, that's Donna. Wonderful. I've got to write that down so I don't forget. So 11 is Donna. And who is 21? 603...dot-dot-dot-dot-dot, 21. That might be me. I don't know why it's there, but nobody else is responding to it. So the first thing I want to do is just recognize a couple of people who are visiting with us this evening. Nancy Fontaine and Donna Hartford. These are two individuals who are interested in perhaps becoming alternate trustees, and so they're attending tonight's meeting, and if they go on to become alternate trustees, this meeting will be their required meeting attendance before they can go on and fill out the paperwork, or before we approve them and then they fill out the paperwork. So, welcome. Thank you for joining us, and thank you for showing interest in the Board of Trustees. And now, I guess we'll have a call to order. And so, Daniel Melkars?
That is me, Anne Sharfstein.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
Yes, it always thinks I am my husband.
Thanks, Dan.
And Sharfstein, indeed.
All right. So Anne and Emma?
Yes, I am here. Emma Lynch.
Well, since I can see all your names, I know you're all here. Nancy Fontaine is here. Barbara Higgins is our minute taker. Amy Lappin, Morgan Swan, Steve Taylor, Susan Valiente, and Donna Hartford, and Shawn is here. All right. So, the main topic of the agenda is to revisit the library's COVID-19 transition plan. And before we begin the discussion, I thought I would summarize where library operations are as of today.
Hey Fran, can I ask you to pause just for a second?
Sure.
Part of the first part of the agenda, too, is that you have to determine if, who's going to be voting, and since we are missing some of our regular board members, Emma would be, would be voting tonight.
So, because Emma checked in first, before...
Yeah. Well, because even if we're missing one person, since we only have one trustee, Emma then is able to vote.
All right. Thank you, Shawn.
Thank you.
All right. So, library operations as of today. So we're at Phase 3, if you have that document in front of you, the library's reopening plan. We are at Phase 3, and we're considering a move from Phase 3 to Phase 4. So with Phase 3, we have contactless pickup in both Kilton and Lebanon. So any library materials that circulate could be reserved and picked up by library patrons. Our online resources are available. We have an outdoor tech lab in existence, running on Thursdays, beginning at 2:00 PM, which makes computers available to people who sign up or simply drop in. For browsing the collection with the building closed, Celeste and Jackie have created physical displays in the Kilton windows, and I don't know if they did it at Lebanon or not. I have photos from Jackie showing me books, games, and some of the cool stuff that circulates in windows at the Kilton, to give people an idea of what's available. We have personalized reading recommendations, which is not a new feature that you get to at the webpage. Within the library catalog, when you open the catalog, i.e. the library catalog itself, you see a link to book lists, which are lists of recommended readings that the library staff has put together. And these are staff picks, as well as books chosen by genre or interest. There's something called Find Your Next Favorite, which leads to the Browse Shelf link, which is in the holding statement of every item record in the library catalog. And if you click on Browse Shelf, if you haven't used it, and it was all news to me until recently, if you click on Browse Shelf, it will show you material on either side of the item that you were originally looking at. So if you looked up Ron Chernow's biography of Alexander Hamilton, if you go to the record in the holding statement, you will see a Browse Shelf link, and if you click on it, you will see the books on the shelf to the right or to the left of Chernow's Hamilton. We have something called Novelist, which links to our holdings and books, et cetera, beyond our library holdings. So those things exist for people who want to browse the collection without entering the building. An obvious limitation is that you must have a computer, or a tablet, or whatever, to get to the library catalog to access most of this. Obviously, the physical displays in the windows are different. So that's what we're doing now. Shawn or Amy, have I missed anything?
This is Shawn. I think you've covered it pretty well. Amy, is there anything that you can think of beyond that? We've really made a push to do, to make browsing easier for our patrons, and as Fran said, the displays at Kilton look great. We tried to do it at Lebanon, but the building just doesn't lend itself to doing it as well as Kilton does.
Right. I think there is some, I haven't been in the building this week, but I think there is a push to put some sort of monitor in a window in Lebanon that's going to have like a rotating, you know, pictures of fun new books, because there really is no way, the windows are just too high up to browse them well, so, but they're still working on that. But I think other than that, no, I think you covered it well, Fran.
Okay, thank you. So then, let's begin a discussion as to whether or not we want to move from Phase 3 to Phase 4. Phase 4 has been presented to us with two options. A, basically indoor computer use, where at the moment, we're providing outdoor computer use, which is weather dependent. And option B is Option A+, browsing in the Kilton Library only, by appointment, limited numbers of people. The restrooms, the meeting rooms, the storytime room would not be open, so basically, you could get into the building to browse the stacks for books, DVDs, et cetera. So let's begin there. Morgan?
Yeah, thanks, Fran. I guess my question is, you know, in a week or two, we're going to have sort of a critical mass of all of these different, sort of reconvening of people from all over the community, but also outside our community. We have Dartmouth students returning, we have, you know, election, primary elections, we have schools starting again. You know, I guess my question is, what, the potential risk of cross-contamination in the community seems to be headed towards an increased, sort of increase, and I'm not sure that, you know, browsing or indoor computer use for, at least for the month of September, possibly October, you know, justifies that level of risk, not only to the staff, but also to the community. If we have students back in school, who are then coming to the library after school, and they're mingling with other patrons, or their, you know, their families are there, like, I'm just, I'm concerned about the potential for cross-contamination that could occur.
This is Anne Sharfstein. Is it okay for me to speak, or is it someone else's?
Absolutely.
Okay. So if I read this correctly, it was that there would be appointments on a couple days, right? Is that correct? Or one day, you could make an appointment to come in?
The document gives some flexibility as far as how we would staff, and how many hours, how many days we would be open.
Yeah. So I didn't interpret it as like, people could come in after school and hang out. I think that is not a good idea, but I didn't, I didn't see that in there. It seems like a limited amount of time for a limited number of people, presumably people who you would ask to self-screen for symptoms before coming to the library. I would like to see browsing the stacks open in a limited way. People are really yearning to be back in the library. You guys have done an amazing job of making virtual browsing awesome, but some people cannot participate in virtual browsing, and I would like to see the building open for some few number of appointments per week.
I'll just follow up on that. This is Morgan again. I sympathize with that desire, but at the same time, I think it's a little foolish to take that kind of risk and put the staff at risk. I'm not clear on what the Kilton's air circulation system is like. I don't know what its rating is in terms of, you know, how much fresh air it's bringing in versus how much air it's just circulating. And to be quite honest, I'm not sure that that's an amenity or a luxury that's worth the risk of potential contamination of the community at a time when we are going to experience an influx of people from outside the community who are then going to mingle with the Upper Valley community.
If, if you feel, then how do you support the tech lab? The tech lab is the exact same thing. It brings in people from the community who want to use the facilities.
I don't, I don't support going to Stage 4 or Phase 4 in any way, shape, or form, to be honest with you. I mean, I like the outdoor lab, because it's been shown that if you're outdoors and you have proper spacing and separation, there's a very, very low risk of people infecting each other. But if you're all going into a circulated air system in an interior space, without a real understanding of, at least I haven't heard any kind of explanation about why the Kilton is preferable to Lebanon in terms of circulation, any kind of indoor environment is just not, not a good idea, in my, in my opinion, especially for, not for something, and I, you know, pardon me, I know that people care about browsing, but at the same time, that seems like such a, like, tier-three priority when we're facing, you know, a global pandemic, and we're having the influx of all these kids who are going to be in school together, and they've been apart all summer, all of these students from all over the world who are going to be coming back into a college environment that is less than five or six miles from our location. I just don't see any, any rational justification for opening, at least for September. I think we should wait, I think we should look and see what happens in September with the schools opening, with Dartmouth opening again, with, with what happens two weeks from the election next week, and then see how our numbers look as a community.
Hello.
This is, oh, go ahead, Susan.
I was just going to say that that's what I had heard you saying, Morgan, is that you wanted to wait a little while longer, not exceedingly, but just, let's say, three to four weeks, or possibly a little more, just to see how things are sort of leveling out in the community with all of the other things that are happening. And I understand that, I do think that that's an important consideration for that. And when we talk about people self-screening before they come to the library, I don't think that's really very reliable. I think if people want to come to the library when it's open, they're going to say they're fine, and some will not. They'll be very honest, but I don't think it, we can look at that as a very reliable system. We know that from the schools, that people send their children, and they say they're not sick, and they turn out to be sick. So, I just, I agree with you, Morgan. I think that if we could wait a few more weeks, that that would give us a better idea of what, of what our community is going to be dealing with.
This is Amy. Would it be okay if I spoke now, or?
Go ahead.
Oh, great. I just wanted to say, I did check with, well, I've checked with a lot of area libraries to see what they're doing, but in particular, I checked with the how, because I feel like they're, because of their location, they're very much in the same sort of situation we are, where they have schools starting and Dartmouth coming back, and they will not even, as my understanding from talking to Ruby is, they won't even be discussing the reopening until October. They do want to see what happens when students come back. They're going to do some outdoor things, like, you know, we're, like, like we're, we're hoping to do, they're going to try to do some in September, but, but they have no, no plans to open the building at this point, and until there's some solid numbers that show we can keep the numbers down with students back. The other, the other point, I guess, that I want to, what concerns me is that people do look to our library as, as, as we know what's going on, you know, and I'm, I am worried, because I don't, I don't feel like I do know what's going on with the numbers. You know, I, I read the numbers, and it, it all looks good, but, but I am, I am not a scientist, and I am worried that people in our community will look to us and say, "Oh, the library's open, it's safe to do X, Y, or Z." If they feel like it's safe for me to go in and browse and do whatever in the library, it must be safe for me to do other things. I just know, I heard this, you know, like, when TJ Maxx first opened, I had, had people tell me, "Oh, you can open now, TJ Maxx is open." And I was like, "Well, that's not science, that's just retail business." But, 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 but that does concern, sure me, that people will maybe make some assumptions about what's safe to do when we open, but that's, that's, I think, what I have to say for now.
Fran, Steve Taylor has his virtual...
Yes, I can see, I, one of the things I do have access to are raised hands, so I can see that, so I can try to moderate this through what I do see here. So Steve, please go ahead.
I guess what I wanted to ask is, we're talking about, perhaps, voting one way or another tonight, but even if we voted tonight, I don't think we would implement for several weeks, at least. Is that correct, Shawn or Amy?
It would take time as far as scheduling staff members, and we would want to put in place protective equipment, make sure we had enough, you know, PPE in general for the staff and for the patrons, depending upon what we choose to do will let us know how we need to configure things. Right, it is a matter of making two choices, you know, which plan do you, would you like to adopt, but then also, when would we like to implement it as well? So, and I'd like to just quickly speak to why wouldn't we, why we're planning just on opening Kilton, and it does have to do with the HVAC. We have pretty good filters in Kilton, and the air gets turned over fairly rapidly, and there's actually no mechanism at all at the Lebanon Library during the wintertime for outside air to, to circulate into the building. You really get nothing beyond whatever you get through, like, the chinks and the holes in the building, so it's much safer, it is safer relatively to open Kilton rather than Lebanon Library, which is kind of like a Tupperware container as far as how much air gets in, in the winter.
So if I understand correctly, if we're, what we're talking about right now would not start until at least October 1st, and so that, the period that Susan is talking about is already a fact, and we will be able to have the issues that Morgan is concerned about of, you know, what happens when the students come back, what happens when the schools open after the election, we'll at least have a couple weeks, even though we may be preparing, before we actually attempt to implement. Is that fair?
This is Shawn. Yes, that is fair. It would be probably a couple weeks out before we could, we could open the doors.
So I guess from my understanding, if we're talking about doing anything, we're talking about doing it no earlier than October 1st.
No, I think we could probably do it mid-September. I'd like, I'd want to hear from other members of our management team, Amy included, to see when we could do that, and what the hours would look like. I would say probably two weeks, but I don't know. What do you think, Amy? Amy, you're muted if you're trying to talk.
I'm having a hard time unmuting. Yeah, it would definitely, it would definitely be, I would say, at least three weeks, just in terms of setting up schedules and protocols, and, and we'd certainly need to determine exactly, you know, how we were going to do this, and, and, you know, how long people would be allowed in, how many people at a time, and who's going to monitor all that. I do think, just with people being gone, we have a few people who will be off the week of the 14th, it would take at least three weeks, but I think October 1st would be a realistic time if we do want to set something up. That, that, that work, you know, that's more in, in, in my thinking.
So this is Shawn. I did want to talk about the staff's perspective on this, because I believe at the last staff, at the last trustee meeting, I, I said I would talk to the staff again about how they feel about reopening at this meeting. So, and I hold ongoing discussions with staff members about items of importance all the time, so I value the opinion of staff members about important issues, and you really can't get much more important than the, this global pandemic. So our staff is split about 50/50 regarding feeling safe about reopening now with those who would rather not have the public in the building, they're concerned about what Morgan and others have discussed, the public schools and Dartmouth bringing students back to campus. And opinions about, vary about how to reopen, with a slight majority who would rather, if we do reopen soon, having computer access only. And I think Morgan got to this point earlier, it's a matter of needs versus wants, really. People on our staff, I think Chuck and Jackie probably have articulated it best, we feel like there are things that people need, really need to do on the computer, for example, applying for jobs is probably towards the top of the list, right? And we saw this in the wake of the Great Recession, we had a lot of people coming in, and that's typical on a recession, it's, public libraries get a lot of use, and we had a lot of people applying for jobs, and people are not able to do that inside the building. We are making laptops and hotspots available to people, but it's still not the same. People need to print. So browsing is more of a, it's, it is, I think, a luxury, it is something that people value. And as we discussed in one management team meeting, people really, they're missing being able to do things, like, I mean, that's what I hear about most often, is browsing the building, it's not using computers. People want to come in and just have the luxury of looking in the stacks and that serendipitous find of a book that you end up really loving, so, but most people feel like it's more important to have the computer access, because people are depending upon it for finding a job or applying for benefits, so. That's, that's where our staff stands, and I do really want to emphasize, we have some people who are really concerned about their own safety, and that's my, my first concern regarding a lot of things that happen in the library is safety. You know, I really want to, I want people to feel like they are being, that, that I care about them and their health and their life, and so that's why I'm being very cautious when it comes to this pandemic. I mean, one of the first things that I did after becoming library director was, we went through some old building assessments, and we looked at some issues that were safety issues with the library. It's one of the things that we're trying to do with the Lebanon Library renovation, is we want to make the front stairs safer, trying to make internal stairs safer. It's, it's going to be something that will not go away, as far as I am concerned regarding my perspective on how I do my job, so that is pretty much all I have to say on that for now.
Go ahead, Steve.
I guess what I wanted to ask, Shawn, is would we be able to guarantee to any staff member that if they chose for whatever reason not to come back and work and continue to work from home, that we would guarantee that would not adversely affect their employment?
Well, I would like to do, this is Shawn, I'd like to do this as far as the staffing is concerned, on a voluntary basis. I would want people who feel safe to, to do this. I would want, not want to put people in a position where they were working on the desk and not feeling like, you know, that they were being, like, they felt like they might be being exposed to a deadly virus, and really being concerned about that. We have some people who feel like it's an acceptable risk, so it varies from person to person, and, yeah, one person I spoke with said she really didn't, when I asked her, "How do you feel about reopening soon?", she was very frank, and she said she just didn't know. She, and one of the first things she talked about was, she said she hears from a lot of people in town, she's a Lebanon native, about how they miss coming into the library and just being there, being, browsing the shelves, but that she, so she did not know whether or not we should reopen, and, but if we did, she could see us doing that, but she would not feel safe working on the desk, and she frankly works most of her... frankly, works most of her time in tech services anyway. If somebody if she felt like she was okay with this reopening, but she didn't want to work on the desk, we would be okay with that. I don't. We have other staff members who are in positions where they had to make a decision about their kids going to school or not. And so they had to in, I think, mid-August, let the school system know what they were going to do about sending their kids or not. And I've talked to them already and talked to this individual already about the fact that I would want it to be on a voluntary basis that people would work on the desk rather than mandating that everyone work. And that allowed her to make a choice that she wasn't sure she could make at the time. So yeah, that would be the way I would want to handle this, which is why the language is fairly vague about certain things about the schedule. A lot of public libraries that are opening up are opening up for two hours at a time and then they're closing for two hours. And then reopening for a couple more hours. And and so they're really, they have very sporadic opening schedules. So and that's probably what would happen with us. We would not be able there. We can't approach even. We would not be able to approach. It'd be very difficult for us to to have the same kind of hours, even just at Kilton. That we we used to have, even though we used to have two libraries that had pretty much the same exact hours. But I would like to hear your your thoughts on that. That's that is the way I would like to handle the the staffing. I think it seems pretty humane and you know, I want people to feel not feel anxious about this. But I'd like to hear trustees thoughts on how that would work.
Morgan, you have your hand raised.
Yeah, thank you, Fran. I guess my question is, you know, Sean, you said that, you know, for I don't know, I think if if printing is the only thing that that is keeping like the only reason they would need access to the building, why can't we come up with a creative solution to to deliver that in some way that doesn't necessitate them coming into the building? Like, we're already putting out people's books in bags with their names on them, which, you know, is a little bit of a reduction in privacy. So if privacy is a concern, we're already kind of like, you know, walking the line there. I'm not sure why why we couldn't do something similar. And and I guess, I like I said before, I completely understand and sympathize with the desire for life to go back the way that it was. And for people to be able to to return to their old, familiar, comfortable patterns. But the reality is that that makes no sense until we have a better idea of how schools reopening both at the college level and at the local level are going to impact our numbers with regard to COVID infection. And I would hate for us as a board to say, oh, yeah, let's like roll on this. Let's just do it. And then we become a vector for infecting the entire community. And I also think we need to be much more agile than than we're comfortable with being in response to the numbers that we see. Like, I think we need to think about, okay, if if our numbers spike, you know, on September 21 or September 30, then we need to be able to say, whoa, we were thinking about opening on the first, but now we're going to shut that down and we're going to postpone until November 1. And I'm not saying you guys aren't open to that. I'm just saying like we we really need to be able to move, I think, a lot more quickly in response to the data that's coming in, maybe then we're comfortable.
Amy, go ahead. Still having trouble unmuting. While Amy tries to unmute, I would like to say a couple of things. This is Fran. In regard to Morgan's point, the option B where we're opening the library to users, option B, item number nine, gives the library director authorization to return the service to a lower level if he sees anything untoward happening. And so I if we if we were to approve option B, I think there is in items or numbers eight and nine, the authorization giving Sean, I'm sure in consultation with Amy and others, the ability to be agile. So I'm not, if we were to go that route, I'm not worried about that. I do agree, and I have from the beginning of this discussion a couple of meetings ago, with Morgan's points about waiting to see where the community is after a few weeks of school in session. I think that's very, very important. What happens after that? Well, we could see. But anyway, I could say more on other things. But Amy is now ready to speak.
I am. I apologize. My mouse keeps freezing up, so I can't get it over to the mute button to unmute, but I hopefully I've solved that. I just wanted to to respond to Morgan's suggestion about getting printing out to people. And you're right, we absolutely could. Yes, there's definitely some privacy issues that get a little wonky once you get to to any curbside, you know, curbside services. You know, we're doing our best with those, but that that is why we haven't done printing at this point. Chuck and I talked about it a while ago and but I it is sort of like what we're seeing, everything people are printing. But I I think that once they're sending something to us, there there's an acknowledgement of that and acknowledgement that their their privacy has gone out the window, which, you know, I feel a little uneasy with, but I under I understand, you know, there's there's either get your stuff printed or not, you know. So I think that we could arrange for people to pick up printing for sure. That seems very solvable.
Yeah, it looks like somebody's baby had her head where.
Sorry, that's it for me.
Hello, Fran. I don't seem to get my little button to come up very fast. This is Susan Valiante. I understand the printing. I sympathize with that. I still agree with the thoughts that you have expressed and Steve and Morgan have expressed about waiting to see. I think that's very important. And I think that October 1 to me is a good time. I mean, if we're talking three weeks, not why not just choose an opening date of the first? And between that time, we will be having, excuse me, another meeting where we can make some other decisions if we see the numbers. But if we can prepare for excuse me, I have my allergies are going nuts. If we could prepare any way for the opening and getting that ready for whenever we're going to start, that seems to me would be an easy way for us to actually decide when the time comes, rather than deciding another date and then starting to get ready. If we could get ready now and then what the date is, we would be ready to go. So I don't know how others feel, but I do agree with waiting. I just think there's too much at stake to to take that chance.
Hi, this is John.
Go ahead.
So we we have a scheduled meeting at the end of September. The fourth Tuesday is actually the 22nd. There are five Tuesdays this month. We want to bump our meeting out another week. Because there's only three weeks right now until the, I think, is the if I'm correct about that.
I would go for that for the 28th, is it?
29th. So, yeah, instead of the 22nd, we would do the 29th. And then we would have more time to see what happens with the schools, Dartmouth and the public schools.
I think that's fine.
This is Fran. That would work for me.
Great.
Morgan, you have your hand up?
Yeah, sorry. I feel like I'm like the persona non grata at this meeting, but I will just say like, one thing to consider, too, is that Dartmouth students come back onsite on the 14th. They are in ultimate lockdown quarantine for two weeks, which means they don't they don't come out of their rooms essentially until the 28th. But, you know, it can take up to two weeks for you to realize that you have it, you know, to become symptomatic or not at all. So and I know I'm coming at this from a Dartmouth perspective, but but the reality is, is it could be mid-October before potentially before people are realized that they are infected after they've already infected other people out in the wild. So that's that's just something to take into account is that we may not know until October 15, the impact of having the Dartmouth community returning to Hanover and potentially spreading to Lebanon. So I'm not, I think it's a great idea to wait, like you said, to push the meeting back. I think that's really smart, but I think we also need to realize that the timeline is actually maybe a little more extended than we would like it to be.
This is John again, and I'll speak to that point because we did have somebody on our staff who had to travel due to a family emergency. She was tested, so she traveled to the south. And she was tested when she came back and it took two weeks for her test to come back, actually, for test result, test results to come back. And she didn't even receive her own test results. She received the test results of eight other people without her own. But she's far enough out now that she seems to not be sick. But it's those the tests are not coming back quickly. And I believe she went through the the city process that they put in place for testing, testing our staff.
This is Fran. One of the one point that I would like to raise is that at the moment, we are providing computer access. And we're we're into September, the weather's going to get cooler. The weather will still be nice into October, but to have computer access outside is going to get increasingly more difficult, I think, with weather, whether it's wet or cool or cold. And so even if we if we want to continue computer access, at some point, we're going to have to go indoors. It's probably going to be before the end of October. And I I just raised that as a point of information. So where are we? So are there any other are there any other points to be raised?
Okay, this is it. And then I promise I'll shut up for like, you know, 10, 15 minutes. Sorry, sorry.
Done by then.
Fran, yeah, I know. No, I know, I know. No, I'll just I'll just say, I mean, I think I think I think I feel just, I know you're all so concerned about what I think, but I I really think I would feel more comfortable, and I'm guessing a lot of people would, if if we did think about, you know, an early October opening, at least in terms of computer access with with Fran, or not Fran, with sorry, with Sean having the opportunity to or, you know, the administration at the library having opportunity to evaluate things on the fly to determine whether or not it warrants going back down to it earlier phase. I'm not sure I would want to just throw the doors wide open and go computer and browsing. But at least the computer access, because obviously, as you've said, Fran, that that's going to be, that's going to be a real issue. And it is a vital issue, as Sean has pointed out, for people who are applying for jobs, whereas I think browsing is kind of like a it would be nice, but it's not, doesn't like have a, you know, it's not life or death impact or, you know, a job impact.
Well, this is Fran again. One of the things about option B, I mean, it looks like it's a pretty limited opening to outside users. And so just to flesh out the information that's included in the proposal, do we have any idea how many people we might let in in the the building at a given time? So I guess this is to Sean and Amy. Do we have any idea how many hours a week we might want to be open? And there are there are other things that are spelled out here. There's there are a number of restrictions. So even if we open to browsing, we're talking about very limited access to the building. So please, well, Steve has his hand up. So why don't you go first, Steve?
This is Steve. I guess what I wanted to say first, Morgan, I am listening very carefully to what you're saying and do appreciate your position. I I think all of us are not as far apart as as you may be feeling at this point because you've been more outspoken. I what I would like to suggest is that we perhaps authorize Sean to begin that that planning process for an opening. I think at this, I'm fine with moving the September meeting to the 29th and would say that, you know, we can review what progress has been made. We will have more information than we have now and that we we sort of look at this as as to begin the implementation process of phase four, but that we are not necessarily committing to a no-go, no-go situation that we might set a future date where we would either, you know, have a meeting or perhaps even electronically just vote as to whether, you know, what we see is going on changes any or all of our minds about timing. And and again, I sort of came in tonight sensitive to what Fran's saying about, you know, whether becoming an increasing factor. But I do understand that all of this is going to take time. So that I'm leaning more towards starting the process to implement phase four, because I do think it's going to take some time and and that we then can say down the road if and when we're ready, whether or not we feel it's appropriate to implement phase four.
My little hand raising thing is not working, but if I could have it I would like a turn. Is that okay? Okay. So I definitely support. I didn't mean start immediately. I definitely support, you know, planning and waiting and seeing how things go. There, I know it's sort of hard to believe since we're all sitting here on computers right now, but there are people in our community who do not have internet and who might need access to books for their mental health. I don't think that books are just a luxury. And it can, I think at some point, we have to give people some access to books, even if they don't have the internet. So that's what I'm concerned about. I just want us to be making plans to give people who can't pick up, pick pick books through the internet to have access to books. It's really important. People are isolated. People need this. It's not just a luxury.
This is Susan. I also can't get my hand raised up. May I speak or is someone else ahead?
Go ahead. No, please.
I agree that books are very important. But correct me if I'm wrong, can't people at least call and ask for a book and that could be put out for them also? And gets if they have any idea of some of the books they may want, I don't is if that's a possibility, I don't see why that couldn't, you know, continue. But I really agree with what Morgan is saying and Steve is saying. There's great concern for this.
Amy.
So, yes, we I wanted to say, well, first I was wanted to respond Fran to to your questions about how we would open. But before I do that, I want to say we have people call all day, you know, all day long. People who don't have the internet are quite used to calling and using the phone. And and we do, I want to make sure that I just let you know that that we are serving all sorts of people and people sometimes know exactly what they want. We spend a lot of time on the phone with people who don't know what they want, but want to know about some of our new stuff. I've had people say to me, you know what, can you just put 10 books in a bag for my my kids? Here's what they're into or whatever, this is what they've liked. So we're actually doing more readers advisory than ever. But we definitely are serving people who who are contacting us directly and we're happy to continue doing so. To answer or just briefly what Fran had asked, what we might do, how we envision opening when we do open. And I think the answer is slowly. I think, you know, it's not going from not being open to opening. I envision it being a couple hours, a couple of days a week. Hopefully, sort of staggered maybe hours for people who Hopefully sort of staggered maybe hours for people who have different schedules. So one day maybe it's the morning, one day it's the afternoon, giving plenty of time for our custodial staff to clean, maybe days in between to clean because we don't have a huge custodial staff. We'll see, that, that, that all will be worked out. But I envision it being slow. And then if we open and things are going well and all the numbers around us are good and, and we're all feeling safe, you know, we, we can, it, it's not hard to open, you know, more. But I'd rather do that than open and have to, to shut it down a little bit or have the staff sort of frantically, you know, trying to make it happen. I, I want to make sure everybody's feeling good about it when we do open again.
Sean.
So there were more details in an earlier draft of this plan. If we do go with the browsing option, that stipulated how many people could be at the building, in the building at the time and how long the appointments would be. And we reconsidered and wanted that to, we wanted to be more flexible with that in order to see how it would work, having a number, having people in the building for those purposes. So I think the number we came up with at one point was 20. The building occupancy limit is actually, I think, over 300. So you're really, which is pretty high, but you could actually accommodate that many people in the building. So we're really at a fraction of where, where we would be as far as our limit is concerned. I think that the governor's order still says 50% occupancy is the, is the limit. Very few public libraries are doing that. But we just wanted some, that's why, again, their language is very vague. If we found that a half hour wasn't really working for whatever reason, which is, we had in our earlier draft, we could, we could change it. I didn't want us to, didn't want us to be tied to a certain plan and not be able to adjust and have to wait for a number of weeks between trustee meetings, which is why, again, the language is, is written as it is. And I, and I am sorry, earlier when I was talking about browsing and, and it being a luxury, I wasn't referring to accessing books in any way as a luxury. But as Amy said, and as Chuck and Jackie and others have very, have put it well, people have a number of different avenues to get, get to books. As, and as Amy was saying, we have people call us a lot about what we have in our collection. Again, it is something that people do miss, but we do, we do have ways to connect our patrons with books. Accessing books is not a luxury. It's maybe the means by which we do so. And maybe luxury is probably not the best, best term either. But yeah, I, I suppose at this point, we are about an hour into the meeting. I, I'd like to suggest that maybe we could start deciding which route we would want to go as far as an option is concerned and then decide when would we want to start rolling on this? Would we want to wait until the September 29th meeting? But I think the first step would maybe, I'm just going to suggest, I mean, obviously you can go a different route if you like to, but just like to suggest that the board come to a, a decision on which option they would like to pursue, A or B.
Okay, Sean, that, this is Fran. That, that raises a question for me. I was just, I was just thinking, if we go to, if we choose to open the building for computer use only, we spoke a little earlier that, and I think we, I think that in the context of opening and for computer use and browsing, we talked about it might take two to three weeks. So let's look at October 1st or even later. If we were talking about computer use only and, and going into the, the large community room, could that happen earlier? Could that happen within a couple of weeks?
So.
I'm asking that before I choose, you know, or, or in the consideration of choosing option A or option B.
Right, okay. So they're intertwined. I'm going to defer to Amy on this because she does know the schedule better than I do. I would, you know, if you're, if it's more limited services that you're providing, I would think it would be easier to do it earlier. But I, that would just be my initial reaction. I'd like to, to hear Amy's thoughts on that.
Yeah, so the question is, could we just open up the community room computer lab earlier? Is that right?
Yeah, basically, yeah.
Yeah, definitely. I, I would say definitely. I think that Chuck and Jackie, yeah, I don't want there to be like this impression that we have no plan for any of this. We've certainly discussed a lot of this. But I think that Chuck and Jackie actually already have a, a pretty firm plan of what an indoor computer lab might look like. So, so yes, I think that, that could happen sooner.
Sure.
And, and we could do it in a real spaced way, so.
Yeah, thanks, Fran. I guess, I'm just confused because I feel like the library, the entire library, regardless of which area the library are in, is still in the same, like, general HVAC system, right? So the air is still circulating regardless, throughout the entire building, regardless of whether you're in the community room or if you're in the stacks, right? So I mean, it wouldn't, like, if you're in the computer room or in the, the community room, like, you're still, that air is still getting circulated throughout the entire building. So you're not really, unless you're, you're, you're talking about, like, there, there'll be a reduction in density, I guess. I mean, but the, the other thing to consider though is like on September, you know, like next week, there are going to be so many people from Ward One who are going to be in that space voting. They're going to be people without masks on in the lobby area. Like, this is, this is something that, you know, it's not just like if we keep them out of the stacks, then therefore it'll be safer somehow or we can open earlier. Like, that, you know, the, the particles are still going to be circulating through the HVAC system regardless of where they are in the building.
Right, but if you only, if you only do the computer thing, you'll have fewer people in the building. Is, is this, is Kilton being used for, as a polling place again at the moment?
Yes, it will be on Tuesday.
Right.
And are the books still in the community room on quarantine?
They, they are, but they'll be, they, they won't be for long. They'll be moved.
Okay. I, I guess, I guess it just, you know, I think my point is like, are there services that we are so essential to provide in the next month that we can't provide remotely or aren't, aren't already providing remotely or outside that necessitate taking any risk at all for any members of our community, including the staff who work at the library? And I don't feel, I don't feel that there are personally. I mean, the, the one is restrooms, right? The bathrooms, but the reality is, is we're not providing that service and maybe we should be in some way, but we're not.
And whether we vote on, whether we vote on either option for Phase Four, we would still not be offering the restroom facilities.
Right, and that's another problem and we can talk about that later, but.
Well, we have, there's three choices really before us. One is to stay at Phase Three, which is what we're doing now with limited computer access outdoors and, and the way we're providing browsing. Phase Four, option A, which would be to take the computer access indoors. And then Phase Four, option B, which, or A, yeah, B, which is the computer use plus limited browsing within the building, which is basically opening the building to a few people at a time. Should we try to vote on each one of these? But then, from our discussion, we've talked about where we are at the moment and at the same time, planning for a future date. So if we were to vote to stay at Phase Three, would we still go ahead with planning to reopen either option A, with option A or option B, say, four or five weeks from now? Am I complicating things too much?
I would like to say something. I just can't get my hand to come up, everybody. So I'm just going to interrupt and you can tell me if you had the floor or not. When we're looking at Phase Three and we're looking at the outdoor tech services, you know, chances are it's going to be decent weather through September and into, you know, October. We, you know, we, that would be fine. Could we offer those services outside more than just the two hours on Thursdays? Could we open that up to maybe two hours, three times a week for people? That may be an option that we could use if we're looking at not having them in the building at all.
This, this is Amy. I, I think that's definitely something that, that we could look at. That would also, because the weather will get if-ier. You know, we don't offer it during inclement weather. So that would give more options for people, you know, more opportunity for there to be a good day in there. I think that is something we could, we could make happen.
And we have, this is Sean. We have expanded the hours and, and I think that's going to start this week or next. Instead of just two to four, it's going to be one to five. And we could, we could add days to that, that schedule, as Amy said.
If I, and this is Ann Shirkson again. If I leave the meeting, does it mess up the quorum? I'm really sorry. I can probably only stay for like five more minutes tonight.
It does not.
Okay, then I'm just going to stay for five more minutes, but I may have, I'm going to probably have to leave at that point.
All right, then let's, let's do an initial vote here. Let's vote between staying at Phase Three or moving to Phase Four. And if we vote to go to Phase Four, we'll have a second vote to choose option A or B within Phase Four. Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, Fran, this is Morgan. But, but do we also want to, if we choose Phase Three, then we also have the option of saying, we're just going to stay at Phase Three without planning for Phase Four? Or we're going to stay at Phase Three with, but give Sean and Amy the authority to begin planning for Phase Four, right?
Do they, do we need to vote to, I mean, my feeling is that they should begin planning for Phase Four at this point. And if it doesn't happen for a while, it'll happen eventually. But if we want to amend, we could, we could say, stay at Phase Three and authorize a library management team to begin planning for Phase Four. How they would roll that out? How's that?
Yeah, I mean, that, that, this is Morgan again. That, that makes sense, although then we would have to also choose which Phase Four, right? Because there's more planning that's going to be involved for browsing and computers.
That, that, if we, that's what I was saying initially. The initial vote would be a choice between staying at Phase Three or going to Phase Four. If the vote is to go to Four, then we have a second vote for option A or option B.
But you're saying that regardless of whether we choose Three or Four, they would start planning for Four regardless?
That's what I would suggest.
So then we would need to know which, which, which Phase Four to tell them to begin planning for if we choose Phase Three, but, right?
Yes, that would be a second, that, yes, we would, we would tell them that.
Okay, sorry. I just wanted to, you know, I'm sorry to be tedious. I just wanted to make sure I completely understood that.
That's fine. So does anyone else have anything to add before I propose that we vote between Phase Three and Phase Four?
Fran, when we're looking at Phase Three, staying at that, that would include having more time outside for techs as Sean and Amy have talked about. Is that correct?
Yes, I think, I think, whatever happens within Phase Three is under the purview of the library management. Right, Amy and, and Sean, I think they already have the authority. They're running the library. I think they have the authority to extend the hours any way they wish within the kind of range of Phase Three.
Yeah, and this is Amy. And we, we are already working on extending the outdoor computer lab hours, definitely.
This is Emma. I can't raise my hand, but I have a question. For if we stay at Three and have more tech hours, is there any talk about having actual books or materials outside with that in addition to the, using the windows? Or enhancing what's offered in Stage Three? Because I'm just assuming if you're bringing computers outside, couldn't you have a few carts of books outside? I don't know if that's a possibility.
Sean, do you want to address that?
Yes, this is, so that is a plan that Celeste actually brought to the reopening committee last week. So, yeah, we do have concerns about people browsing through the books and there is transmission of the virus by touching, touching items. It's something that we could consider. So it's not part of our, our plan with the outdoor tech lab. But if the board would want us to do that, extending our, if you wanted it to be under that umbrella of the stage, three plans, we could do that. It would be very, very limited though.
Yeah, no, I would, I would, a few carts, you know, like one of children's books, one of adult books or, you know, I, I imagine it would be limited, but it might be a nice option.
Amy, this is something that you, did you discuss this with?
I have to leave, I'm so sorry.
Sorry, Ann.
I'm sorry, Ann, I thought we might get it in.
The good old days when we used to be done within an hour.
I'm sorry.
With a full agenda.
That's all right. I, I was hoping we could get this in, but, get the vote in, but.
I do have a question again. If we're adding books, that's changing what we have in Phase Three, is it not?
It would be, yes.
Yeah, so then we're, so we're adding another whole thing if we're looking at books. It's no longer just Phase Three. Now there's a Phase Three plus books outside. It just seems to be getting more complicated as we go with adding more things.
Well, I don't, let's see, some, Phase Three, some public services restored out of building. It only lists two things in the document. Contactless delivery pickup, blah, blah, blah. But it also has evaluate homebound outreach delivery of material services, which may have already been done. Well, I guess it would constitute a change in what's written down there.
This is Morgan. I'm sorry, just going to jump in, like, I mean, browsing is browsing, you know what I mean? Like, like, you know, at Dartmouth Library, we're, we're quarantining materials for 72 hours after some, after a single person touches them, right? Like, so, and if we have just carts other that people can flip through, maybe that's not, not what Emma was suggesting. So I'm sorry if I'm misunderstanding that. But like, you know, in, any situation in which multiple people can just sort of come up and touch things at will, that's, you're, you have the potential of making that a vector, whether it's inside or outside of the building. I mean, inside is obviously a lot more, there's a lot more of a risk, but it's still sort of, in my opinion, it's sort of an unnecessary risk.
It is a risk and it raises the point that Ann made, I think, at our last meeting. When she was arguing in favor of browsing within the building, she raised the example of supermarkets and other stores that are open and allow people to come in and browse their shelves. And people are grabbing things all the time off of shelves in supermarkets and putting them back. So, and I, I don't know the answer to this and, and Ann didn't either at the last meeting. When we, she wondered aloud, how are stores dealing with that? They have you, they don't force you, but they have hand sanitizer and other things available for people as they're entering the store. I don't know if having. I don't know if having hand sanitizer available would answer that concern, but stores that are open now are already dealing with that, and we're all living with it. But that does change the way Phase 3 is written out. So if we're gonna vote on Phase 3 as it stands, then this would be a change that would have to be considered before voting on Phase 3. Of course, if we don't vote at all, we are back at Phase 3.
Or could there be two points to Phase 3 if we're looking at something being added to it? That, you know, Phase 3 as stated, or Phase 3 plus browsing?
Well, yes, Phase 3 plus some sort of browsing, or we could leave it up to the discretion of, of the library staff as to whether or not they want to expand access within Phase 3. As Sean said, I'm on the reopening committee and there's, you know, there's dialogue going on, on the Slack program, and so I was aware and I was remiss in not mentioning that as a possibility at the very beginning of the meeting. So, library staff on the reopening committee are continuing to think about new and different ways to make things available to people. We meet once a month. If they come up with an idea and want to try it, if they feel it's safe enough within the context of how they see the library, and they seem to be very conservative for the most part, do we need to sign off on every change that occurs? Or are we willing to give the library management and library staff the authority to go ahead and make some changes as they see fits?
Well, Fran, in response to that, I have no problem with the library staff making decisions about what should be done. I trust them implicitly with these things. It's just that if we are going to do that, it should be, it should be stated in Phase 3. It shouldn't just, because we're not, we're just, we just don't have it in there. So either way, that it would be, you know, whether they make the decision or not, we should, we should ensure that they know that they have that authority with our vote.
I agree. I think that's prudent. It gives them cover if they ever need it. So where does that, but then where does that leave us? Do we need to make an amendment to Phase 3 as it's written in this reopening policy? To add a point saying that if the, if the library staff arrives at acceptable services restored outside of the building, acceptable to them, that they have our approval to go forward with them.
Sounds good to me. This is Morgan.
I was just gonna say, silence is acquiescence. Or approval. All right, then why don't we do that? We'll say, within Phase 3, if the library management and staff come up with new ideas for restoring public services outside of the building, we will give them the authority to do that.
You're still in me? Jesus. Come on, Ricky.
Steve.
I would like to make a motion. I would like to move that we amend Phase 3 to add items 8 and 9 on Phase 4, giving library staff the discretion to make those decisions. And I guess, as a comment, would like to say, I think Emma was asking if it would be possible. And, and that was, is a very good question. But I'm content to let library staff answer Emma's question and make the decision without further action on our part. So the motion is just to amend Phase 3 to add items 8 and 9.
But if we're, why, why would that be necessary to add? Why would it be desirable to add 8 or 9 if we're already, if in Phase 3, the, the building remains closed?
I, I guess just add something that authorizes library staff to add services if they deem that it's safe and reasonable, without opening the building.
That's a motion.
Okay.
So the motion is to add a statement giving the library management authorization to add services, public services outside the building, if they feel it's safe and warranted. Make sense? All right. Let's have a roll call vote. Fran, yes, I'm in favor of that motion. Emma?
Yes.
Hey, Morgan?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
All right, so that passes. Now.
Was there a second to that motion?
Oh, God.
Morgan swung second.
I'm, I'm a terrible moderator. All right, we need a second.
I'm having a second. It's Morgan's one.
I think Morgan got to it.
Morgan's the second. All right.
Get the buzzer, soonest, yeah.
And there is no further discussion, I'm sure. Fran votes yes. Emma? Emma?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Morgan?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
All right, so we've modified Phase 3. Now, let's vote between remaining at Phase 3 or moving to Phase 4 with the understanding that Phase 4 will take time to roll out. Let's vote on remaining at Phase 3. See if we get to Phase 4.
Fran, I'm sorry, it's Morgan.
Yes. We need a motion.
The slowest person here. So when we say Phase 3, we say Phase 3 without any consideration, like what we're voting on now is saying, we're just gonna stay at Phase 3 until we bring it up for, for consideration at a later meeting? Or we're saying, we're saying if we vote for Phase 4, we're saying we're Phase 3 right now, but we're authorizing library administration to begin planning for Phase 4 in the future?
We can do that anyway, I think.
Yes, that's, that's what we're saying, although there's nothing, if we stay at Phase 3, there's nothing to prevent library management and staff from planning for Phase 4, which they already have done.
Okay. I guess that's where I'm confused, because I'm like, if I'm voting for Phase 4, then, then I feel like I'm not, I'm not in favor of switching to Phase 4 immediately. I'm in favor of staying at Phase 3 currently, but planning for the future implementation of Phase 4. But I kind of feel like it's hard to vote for Phase 4, like definitively, without knowing at what point we would, we would intend to implement it.
Well, based on the discussion, based, based on the discussion, as I recall it tonight, if we voted to go to Phase 4, we would then vote to go either to option A or to option B. And whatever option we chose for Phase 4, we would be, I think we would be authorizing the library management to get to that phase as quickly as possible. At the same time, they have to keep in mind what's going on in the outside world, and they may have to pull back from, from implementing Phase 4.
Right, and so I guess I'll just be like straightforward and, and, and say that if I don't know at what point they, that Phase 4 will be implemented, then I don't feel comfortable voting to implement Phase 4. Because if Phase 4 happens next week, then, and I vote for that, then I definitely don't want that to happen. But if it's like October 1st, like, that's a completely different ball of wax for me.
Well, I think.
Sorry, I know, maybe I'm splitting hairs.
No, this is, this is, this is a complicated issue, and, and all of these questions are welcome. Well, from what we heard in the discussion also, I, well, let's make a motion if we get, if, for Phase 4, if we're gonna vote for Phase 4, let's include in the motion that it wouldn't be implemented before October 1st. Or another date, a later date, if, if someone wants to make that motion.
I would like to make that motion. This is Steve.
Make the motion.
I move that we, we stay at Phase 3, but ask the library staff and management to begin implementation to be ready for Phase 4 no sooner than October 1st.
Is there a second?
I second that. Susan Valiente.
Is there any further discussion? Then let's go ahead and have a roll call vote. Emma?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Fran? No. The motion passes. So we will stay at Phase 3, planning for Phase 4, not to implement Phase 4 before October 1st.
Or later.
Well, not to open.
I know, I'm just saying in my mind, that's all, Fran. It's okay.
Yes, because if anything, I mean, if we learned, as someone said earlier, at the end of September, that COVID numbers have gone crazy, then of course, we're going to back off. Sean and Amy, does that all make sense? The library staff?
So that, that does. Do we now then have to choose which option you want to go with, or should we be choosing for both? Should we be planning for both the options, then?
I, my original thought was that if we chose Phase 4, that then we would have a second vote to choose between A or B.
Great.
So would someone like to make a motion? For choosing within Phase 4, option A or option B?
Could, could I ask a question, though, like maybe of Sean and Amy, like, like, is it, how much more work would it be to prepare for option B or make a plan for option B as opposed to option A? And would it be, would it be overly burdensome for you to prepare both with opportunity for us to review that at our late September meeting and then make a decision? Then would that give you enough time to implement one or the other?
So this is Sean. So I would want to put in some pretty rugged Plexiglas barriers for the building, if we do go with option B. So there would be, there would just be some construction that we would have to do. So if we do leave it open, then that will be part of it as well. We will pretty quickly make some plans on what that's gonna look like, or we'll purchase, I'm, I'm a little dubious about purchasing things, just because I want something that's really more custom-made for our desks, and so, yeah, there, there would be, there would be more intensive planning that would have to go into the, into the browsing option, option B.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, do you think that that would make it more difficult than to, I'm, sorry. Would, would that make it more difficult then to sort of track that back? Depending upon, like, would that, would that reduce your ability to be agile in terms of changing in response to like spiking numbers, like at the end of September, or, or not?
I, I don't, I don't think so. I mean, in terms of creating plans, Morgan, I think that, or, we can do that, that, that's, we have, we have plans. You know, we, other libraries are, are working on plans. We've been working on plans. So I think we could plan things out, whether we could actually implement them in terms of browsing the, the stacks and all before October 1st. I, I don't, by October 1st, I don't know. Like Sean said, there's just a lot of physical things that would, will need to happen and that will need to get, to get. But in terms of making a plan for both, I think that's a reasonable thing to ask of us, to have a plan for both, for sure.
I get, yeah, sure, that, thank you, Amy. That's, that's kind of what I meant. I mean, do you think that if, if you did that and then we made a decision on September, when is it, September 28th that we're meeting again, would that give you, how much time would you need after that point to potentially implement the plans for option B? Like, what would be, like, like a week, two weeks, three weeks, like, especially if you're gonna have to purchase things?
So option B, gosh, I'm so sorry. I feel like I've lost, lost my, the train a little here. So it's option B, remind me, is the browsing.
I believe so.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, the op, option B would definitely, that, that we'd have to tell you, I think on that date, we could give you a better, because we do need to make the plans and see when we could get someone in to put up Plexiglas. We would have a much better idea of it by the end of September, for sure, but, but the plan could be in place. The implementation, I don't, I don't know. I can't think of anything other than the Plexiglas that's gonna take a lot of time to, to, to install, but I could be missing something completely at this point.
Can I, this is Morgan. Can I make a motion?
Please do.
I, I move that we we empower library administration to, to create plans for both option A and B with the goal of presenting both options to us at our next meeting, at which, including a timeline for implementation, at which point we can, as a board can decide which option is best. Does that make sense, or was that like convoluted?
No, that's fine. My thinking was that option, option B incorporates option A, right? Because it's computer use and browsing.
Oh, yeah, that's a good point.
Well.
Someone else, someone else make a motion.
This is Amy. I just wanted to say, it may incorporate option B if there are other, but, but it may, I mean, A and B maybe happen at the same time. They may not. We, that in the planning, we'd have to look at staffing and actually if, if, once the library, main part of the library is open, what will clean best? And I haven't had these conversations with our computer people. It may actually be at that point that we would open up the, the desktops instead of the laptops, but, but that has not been determined at all. So, so I don't want to say, yes, A and B definitely would happen together, because they might, it might be a different plan.
But it would include, so we would have computer access in addition to the, we would still keep the computer access. It might just look. in addition to the, we would still keep the computer access. It might just look a little. And the, the location would be different. Maybe it would be desktops rather than laptops. But Fran, you did put it well when you said that it would wrap, B does wrap A up in it, so.
All right. Thank you, Sean, for clarifying that. I, yeah, I get, I get that.
So, so would it be better, this is Morgan, so would it be better to say that, that we would empower library administration to develop or to begin planning for Options A and B with the purpose of presenting, including timelines for implementation that would then be presented at the next meeting? Does that?
Does that make sense, Sean and Amy? Do you?
That makes sense to me. Yeah.
Oh, thank God. I wasn't, I wasn't sure if I was making any sense at all. Thank you.
Finally. Finally, you've made sense tonight, Morgan.
I know. It took me a while.
We just need a second.
So we need a second.
I will second. Steve?
Thank you, Steve. Is there any further discussion? If not, let's have a roll call vote. Emma? Morgan?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Fran? Yes. All right, that passes. So I think we're finished with that agenda item.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yes.
Why did you vote no?
I like Phase 3. That's all.
Can I ask a quick question? This is Amy. My, my question is hopefully simpler. Did we, did, did you decide at the beginning of this meeting, did we officially move the date of our next meeting to September 29th?
Well, thank you. Everyone who spoke thought that that was fine. And I don't know if I spoke or not about that, but I think it's fine. And so I think that's, we, do we need to make a motion to move the meeting date?
I don't think you do.
I mean, the majority of us here, or everyone here who's a voting member, I think, has already said that moving it to the 29th is fine. Anne is gone, but she already said that it's fine. So why don't we just consider the meeting date changed to the 29th?
So just to, I want to make sure that we, we get this right for our next meeting on the 29th. So we're, we're staying in, in Phase 3 now, but fleshing out the details on both options in Phase 4. Right?
I believe that was the motion.
Okay. Yeah, because the timelines might be a little different, although, yeah, okay. Yeah, I'm not going to, I won't prolong the, the meeting anymore by musing on the subject. But yeah, okay, great. Thank you.
Could I ask Sean that you make sure that, that Anne, but also Susan DeRosiers and,
Laura?
Laura, make sure they're aware as soon as possible because they may have it in their calendar already. And so we want them to know that the change is coming.
Will do.
Is there any other business?
I have one item. And it's related. Back in May, our office, we, we had it sprayed with some type of disinfectant that supposedly resist germs or bacteria, whatever, from, from accumulating on surfaces, particularly for hard surfaces, desktops and that sort of thing. We were told it was safe for computers. We've had no problems with it. I, I guess I'm throwing out to Sean and Amy and whoever, you know, should you consider that? I would encourage you not to do it until after the election, but that perhaps after the election, find out if this does work and, and consider it as a, as a first step. Supposedly, it lasts for three to five months.
Wow. Could you send us details of what that was?
I will get that information and hopefully get it to you tomorrow.
Great. Thank you, Steve.
I read about something related, it's related, but it's for airlines. They were, American Airlines in Texas was approved to disinfect the interior of their planes with the surface material, this stuff for the surface, but it was only, it only lasts a week. So if you have something for three or four months, that's sort of amazing. All right, so that's any other business, any other other business?
You wanted me to quickly discuss the north side of the building by the bus stop, right?
Yes, if you would.
Sure. So we've had, we've had conversations with Advanced Transit about a number of people are congregating behind the bus stop at Kilton Library. So it was brought to our attention that there were some problems. I guess some passengers on the, on Advanced Transit were complaining to management there. This is about three or four weeks ago. We pulled the picnic table, moved benches, but people are still congregating there. We've had issues too in an area where we actually have, we have our trash in recycling and compost and the entry to the basement. Typically, it's not really frequented by people at all. But during the pandemic, it's been kind of a problem area and we're having a number of people drinking there and sleeping there and some worse issues as well, drug use. Our neighbor on the north side who owns the plaza there has also been very vocal about complaining in the last couple of weeks about the number of people who are there and spilling onto her property and doing damage to the property or breaking in. Somebody broke into a bulkhead. She put up signs that have been torn down. People have been asleep in front of tenants' doors. Working with the police department, city manager, we had a meeting of the surplus committee too. We've decided to fence that entire area. And the neighbor on the north side of the building, the woman who owns the plaza, has offered to give us $6,000 towards the project. We're going to make it a, a nice looking fence and fairly tall. So almost the entire area behind that bus shelter is going to be fenced in. It's a fairly large area. It's going to be about 120 feet of fencing and gates, all told. But we felt it was necessary. We've had a lot of conversations among staff. Talked to at least three trustees about this in, in one way or another. And we are, we have a quote from Springfield Fence and we're moving forward with that project. So just wanted to update you about that.
Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn? Oh, but before we do, thank you Nancy and Donna for joining us.
You're welcome.
All right. Would someone like to make a, a motion to adjourn?
I will. This is Emma. I make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second that. Susan Valiante.
Thank you. Then we will vote. Fran votes yes. Emma?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
We are adjourned. And Barbara, thank you very much for dealing with this very complicated meeting.
Anytime.
Oh, good. We'll do it again next month. All right. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Hi.
Thank you, Fran.
Thanks, Fran.